Good morning, everyone. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our regularly scheduled meeting of the Birmingham City Council for July 13, 2021, 9:30 a.m. We're going to have our Pledge of Allegiance by, no, our invocation by Council Hilliard and our Pledge of Allegiance by Council President Pro Tem Wardine Alexander. So, good morning, everyone. Everyone, please.
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning to my colleagues. May we bow our heads?
Stand. Hold on. May we stand?
Bow our heads. Gracious Father, thank you for this wonderful day. Thank you for bringing us together, Father God. Father God, I ask you to touch the minds and souls of each of our colleagues, Father God, in the mayor of our city, so the things that we do, Father God, will be in thy honor, Father God. Father God, let us change lives and make a difference, Father God. Father God, we ask you to touch every soul throughout this building and throughout the city of Birmingham, Father God. Father God, we ask you a healing, Father God. Father God, we ask you to touch our children, Father God, so that they may be protected, Father God, as we go along. Father God, we ask you to touch the gun violence and everything that is happening in major cities across the country, Father God, so that we can bring things under control, Father God. Father God, we need you in the decisions that we make, Father God, so that we can make a difference. Father God, I ask you of all of these things and blessings, let's all say, "Amen."
Amen. To the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, Mr. Clark. How you doing?
Great, sir. Morning to you.
Morning.
Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Hilliard. Councilmember Hilliard. Councilmember Hoyt. Councilmember O'Quinn.
Morning.
Morning, sir. Councilmember Smithman.
Morning.
Morning. Councilmember Williams.
Good morning.
Council, morning. Councilmember Woods.
President.
President Pro Tem Alexander.
Good morning, President.
Good morning. Councilmember Parker.
Good morning. Good morning. The minutes are not ready for May 4, 2021, through July 6, 2021. Good morning. How you doing, sir? Mr. Mayor.
Morning, Mr. President. Mr. President. Good morning to the entire council. You all haven't been on this end yet, but there's a little echo that bounces back off you. I think you just experienced that. Kind of caught me off guard, but it is good to be with you all this morning. I'll be very, very brief. A few updates. One is that, for those watching this morning, I want to encourage you that if you have not received the COVID-19 vaccine, please consider doing so. Today as well as July 14th, Lawson State will be hosting a free COVID-19 vaccination clinic from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Again, that is today as well as July 14th at Lawson State. Today's clinic will be at the school's Birmingham campus in the Academic Success Center. So again, today is a great opportunity to get a free vaccination shot from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on Lawson State's campus. Wednesday's clinic will be at the Bessemer Clinic in the library lounge at Ethel Hall Parking Lot. A second note, Mr. President and council, is that, as many of you all know, we are, as a city, commemorating and marking 150 years of existence. We have several initiatives in place to mark that milestone, including the 150th Summer Celebration, which will be at Legion Field this Friday from 5:00 to 9:00. I want to encourage all of you all to come out. There will be food, there will be music, and a performance by Logan the Entertainer and more. There's some additional information for you and your constituents. Please visit birminghamal.gov/150. Again, that's birminghamal.gov/150. Mr. President, the next note is about taking pride in your neighborhoods. You know, that's something we've communicated to you all. I want to commend our Public Works Department, keep Birmingham beautiful, residents, as well as volunteers for pitching in to help with the city's aggressive, continued aggressive cleanup effort known as the '99 for the 150th. Taking pride where I reside. Each week, as you know, we are having a heavy concentration in the four quadrants of the city to address bulk trash, litter, broken street signs, grass cutting, code enforcement, and more. The citizens in that area, through the neighborhood officers, et cetera, and other channels, are receiving notice in advance when we will be in that area. But there's additional detailed information that you all can see, read about, and share with your constituents at birminghamal.gov/takingpride. Again, that's birminghamal.gov/takingpride. Last note, Mr. President and council. I'd like to take this moment to congratulate one of Birmingham's own and a son of this city, and that is Pastor Mike McClure Jr., for winning not one, not two, but three stellar gospel awards this weekend in Nashville, Tennessee. He won for Artist of the Year and Urban Inspirational Performance or Single of the Year for the song, "I Got It." Pastor Mike has won five stellers in the last two years, and I think it's a good moment for us to pause and celebrate him. So congratulations to Pastor Mike McClure Jr. Mr. President, that concludes the mayor's report. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor, please.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to see if there's any chance that we could get, when that communication goes out to our, to the districts, maybe, or the neighborhood officers, however, I don't know how it's being communicated, that we could know about it, because that is coming up in neighborhood meetings and so it... I was asked a lot of questions and I had a lot of "I don't knows." So, all right, thank you.
Okay. We're good on this side. Yes, well, Council Smith, then I go to Council. Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask the...
Miss microphone. Microphone.
Talk ahead. Mr. Mayor, I wanted to ask, since the new budget is passed, are we going back to normal recycling? And are we going to be told where the new areas are, where the one-day garbage pickup, recycling, and the big cans are going to be provided and all that?
To your second question, the answer is yes. We will provide an update. I don't even know yet, so as soon as I get it, you'll get it as well in real time. To your first question, we've already, should have been communicated with you all too, but we're going back to twice a month. And we look to extend that when we get some, hopefully, additional vehicles that maybe you all will approve at some point, but as of now...
You mean like today?
Ma'am?
You mean like today?
You approve?
Approve at some point. There's some garbage trucks on this agenda today.
There is.
With special equipment, hopefully, for picking up those big giant cans.
Well, let me answer the question. We're going from, we've gone from one day a month to, for the month of July, twice a month. So at some point in the future, can't necessarily give a date today, but we look to extend that more, but for now, twice a month. Recycling is now twice a month.
Okay, but we're gonna eventually make it back to normal.
That is...
That's our plan.
That is the full intent. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you, because Neighborhood Association folks are asking about all of these things that we've cut back on. When are we going to start full-fledged again? So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Counselor Smithman, good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, President Parker. Mayor Woodford, I know we've talked about this briefly last year, but I met with Rev. Birmingham and the owner of The Waits, and they are having a very bad homeless problem. I don't think this is your typical homeless problem. This is actually where people are coming up and spitting in people's food. They are fighting management. They are releasing certain things on the outside of the restaurants. And I have the police reports for you from Taco Mama, but we are at jeopardy of losing some of those restaurants. So I just wanted to say that and that I have those reports to you. I'm going to email that to you as well.
Yes, ma'am.
And then the last thing is code enforcement. And I wanted to talk about this publicly. I think that's something that touches on all nine of our districts. I want to have a discussion, maybe it's committee of the whole or PIC, about talking, maybe with Judge Sparks, about night court hours, even that has a cost, because I think they'll help up to open up the dockets to address code enforcement cases, because a lot of times they're so jammed up with their docket, they can't get to the, I guess, say, the really, really bad offenders for code enforcement, like the people with the super junky yards, super junky porches. Also, I know this is future discussion about maybe, I don't know how this will work, having code enforcement come in the evening, because I don't know about the other AMR colleagues, but a lot of the offenses happen after work. Like, usually, they move their...
And all the...
Well, I don't know, we can tell them work on weekends, but, you know, like, I don't know, for example, if somebody has a parked car in the yard, for example, they'll move it during the day, but then after work, when they know code enforcement is going to be out, they'll move it back in and will take pictures, and the residents will turn in, but they can never catch them. So I just wanted to just bring that up publicly for a discussion as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Is that everyone? Okay. All righty. Mr. Clark, ready for the consent agenda?
Consent agenda starts on page two with item one. Page three, we have item number two on consent. Page four, item three is on consent. Page five, item four is on consent. Page six, item five is on consent. Page seven, item six is on consent. Page eight, item seven is on consent. Let me skip over to page 10. We have items eight and nine on consent. Page 11, item number 10 is on consent. Page 12, item 11 is on consent. Page 13, item 12 is on consent. Page 14, item 13 is on consent. Page 16, item 14 is on consent. Page 17, item 15 is on consent. Page 18, item number 16 is on consent. Page 20, we have item 17 on consent. Page 21, we have items 18 and 19 on consent. Page 22, we have item number 20 and 22 on consent. Page 23, we have items 23, 24, 25, and 26 on consent. Page 24, items 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, and 32 are on consent. Page 25, items 33, 34, 35, 36, 37, and 38 are on consent. Page 26, items 39, 40, 41, 42, and 43 are on consent. And page 27, items 44, 45, 46, and 47 are on consent. Mr. President, you should have received an email from the deputy city clerk relative to item 44 with the language substitute. This language, it should read a resolution acknowledging the lease agreement for full-color print shop production machines and related maintenance and service as needed at unit and its proximate annual lease cost of $36,322.40 for a period of three years from ABS Business Systems of Birmingham LLC in accordance with Omni Partners LLC. And that was sent via email, that update to that particular item. On page 28, we have items 48, 49, 50, and 51 on consent. Page 29, we have items 52, 53, 54, and 55 on consent. Page 30, we have items 56, 57, 58, and 59 on consent. Page 31, items 60, 61, 62, 63, and 64 on consent. Page 32, item 66 is on consent, and then you have several addendum items. You have item 67 on consent, as well as 68, which are both addendum items.
Okay. All righty.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to ask that we remove item 25 from consent?
Twenty-five?
Twenty-five.
Yes, ma'am.
And I wanted to ask a question about item 44, and I guess this would be for the Law Department, the Office of the City Attorney. What is the reason that we have used new terminology in this item, acknowledging instead of accepting and approving? What is the, what is that?
Actually, this item, it was typed up wrong for the agenda. It's actually not a bid item. It was, the original language was shit up and submitted in the beginning. It's not a bid item. It's under the state contract as a second.
Okay, so that's what we will be, that's the verbiage we'll be using in the future?
Not necessarily in the future, just for this particular item. We typed it up wrong Friday. It was incorrect, the language.
Well, I read the new language and I didn't, I thought that they changed the acknowledging part, so, you know, it just goes to show, even reading something doesn't mean anything sometimes. So this was not a bid item.
So, you want to keep it on?
Mr. President. I was trying to give clarification.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Ms. Abbott, as we discussed yesterday, a budget and finance item was before your committee, and I think we may note that it was a substitution that was made to make the language change, because you made the acknowledging comment. So this item is actually on a cooperative, which is a bid, so that's why we pulled it from the agenda, because it's considered a bid, non-bid item, because it comes off of state cooperative.
Okay. But we have a lot of things that come off of the state cooperative, don't we?
Yes, ma'am. It saves us a lot of time instead of putting things out for bid.
Okay. Okay. And then I have on items 54, 55, 57, no, not 57, 58, 59, 60, and 61. I don't want to take them off consent. I just want to know how many we're planning on buying. I know that this does not say that we're buying anything. It just says we can, but I'm just curious to know how many we are planning to actually purchase.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Abbott, so if you recall, the council approved probably about a month and a half ago a fleet lease management agreement that, so we can buy a large amount of equipments and repay that over a certain amount of lease, years. On your question, I know you said that the, you said the, what was the limb loader or which one district? You had a question about how many we were purchasing. I can provide this full list...
Like the Ford F-350 Crew Cabs that we're buying?
We're purchasing eight, and there'll be two per district for DPW.
Okay, and we're going to have large numbers of policemen driving around in them, loads of policemen?
No, not the F-150, but remember we had the top...
No, this is the F-350 Crew Cabs, so I assume if we're buying Crew Cabs, we're going to load them up with police officers.
That's, that's public works.
That's public works.
No, it says for police departments.
Which one is it?
Item 60. I read it.
Is that another typo?
Could be, Clark. It could be. But the list that was provided to the council when we did the leasing program, that was for DPW, so that may just be a...
So I think, let's try to get that...
But this says purchase. So are we leasing or purchasing?
No, we have to purchase in order to lease it, but the leasing mechanism that will be done by NCL, we have, the funding was set up by the council when they approved the master lease agreement. So we have to purchase, but they will hold the leasing, that we will make the payments every year.
Okay, so these are on the list that you all provided us to go with the leasing information?
Yes, ma'am.
But since it's all included in our packets, can you send that separately?
Yes, ma'am.
Good, because that, you know, we have constituents who read our agendas, and sometimes they ask us questions that we can't answer, and then we have to ask you.
I would definitely provide that to the council again.
Good, thank you. Well, I don't want them taken off, because I desperately want these garbage trucks and street sweepers and all those things that we're getting. I just wanted to know how many we were going to get.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. That's all from me.
Did you want 44 to stay on consent or you want it off, Ms. Abbott?
Oh, well, now that I understand that we're going to start acknowledging things, that's fine.
Okay.
It was just different language than we normally use, and I thought, well, what is the meaning of this?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so another one you want off is 25?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
What are we taking off, I'm sorry?
Just item 25.
Item 25.
Dr. O'Quinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to take 61 off consent, just because I think that one needs to be read.
Okay. All righty. Everybody good? Council Hoyt? Okay. All right. All items designated as consent or routine and non-controversial will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing is a request. If so, such item or items will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. All matters of permanent operation will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced.
Motion to approve.
Second.
So that was Counselor Williams and, was that Counselor Smithman?
Abbott.
Okay.
Abbott.
Abbott, okay. Mr. President, Kim, you want to, we also doing the virtual piece of this as well, so she wanted to make sure the public understands about weeds and things on the consent agenda. Did you get that straight?
So do we need to do this motion again?
No, we're fine. I just wanted her to be able to find out if anyone wanted to speak to it, that it's on the virtual phone call, any of the weed items or public hearing items that will be issued. You haven't heard from them, okay?
Okay. All right, we're ready now to vote, Mr. Clark?
Okay. It should be open for everyone. I see a couple of people popping up. Counselor Abbott, you're out or in?
Well, nothing's popping up, so aye.
Okay. Counselor Hilliard, you down? Are you down, sir?
I'm down.
Okay. Counselor O'Quinn, you're down. Counselor Woods? Okay. Counsel Pro Tem Alexander, you're?
Aye, I'm down, but my vote is aye.
Okay, great. All right, consent agenda passes. Ready, Mr. Clark?
All right, let's see, where we going? Looks like first would be 21?
Yes, sir.
Item 21, in ordinance, approving and authorizing the mayor to execute an easement agreement under which the city will grant to the Waterworks Board, the city of Birmingham, a permanent easement and right-of-way through a portion of city-owned property located at 4802 Avenue W for the purpose of maintaining, repairing, operating, an existing 42-inch water main with easement agreement, also to address the party's rights and responsibilities with respect to a portion of the city's bus rapid transit west terminus station platform, which will be located over the water main. This is the first reading, so if we want to pass it today, I need UC, but I need UC anyway to discuss it as well, so.
Motion for UC.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion on the item?
Second.
Second.
Councilmember Smithman and Councilmember Williams. The item's before you, sir.
Okay. Any questions, anyone? All right, Mr. Clark, I think we're ready to vote.
So we got Councilmember Hoyt, Councilmember Smithman, Council Pro Tem Alexander.
Aye.
Okay. All right, that item passes. Next item, Mr. Clark.
We're going to 25. Item number 25, which is on page 23, a resolute in authorizing the Birmingham Police Department's Community Outreach and Public Education Division to host and conduct a ones-fire safety class on July 17th and July 31st, 2021, to take place at the Birmingham Police Department firing range and declaring this same to be a public purpose.
Who's the item?
Second.
Okay.
Mr. President? Excuse me. Yes, I wanted to ask how this is being publicized, since this was a big surprise, to see this on the agenda, and this Saturday is the first class.
Mr. President?
How you doing, sir?
Morning.
Morning.
President. Counselor Abbott, Chief Smith is here to speak to the item, so he'll come up and address your question.
Good morning, Chief. Good morning. How you doing, sir?
Hey, good morning. How are you?
Good, fine. Good morning.
Prior to this coming to the city council, our Community Outreach Division put out a sign-up sheet for folks to judge interest by women, and once we gauged the full interest and had enough people, then we decided to go ahead with the class. So this is the latter part to get it approved before the council, before proceeding with any class or anything else for, this is like an echo here.
Yeah, I know. We have to work on that. We gotta maybe change that.
Before proceeding with the class.
Okay, so you put out a sign-up sheet where?
We put out a sign-up sheet through various community groups to see which parts of the community were interested. Once we had sufficient people for the class, then we decided to go forward. If we find that we have additional people who are interested in the class, then we will do subsequent classes after this one.
Okay, well, so how do they, who do they contact? Because I know there are a lot of people who are interested that didn't see your sign-up sheet.
Yes, there was a sign-up sheet. It was also online as well.
Okay.
And we're going to go by this first class to see how things go, and then we'll have additional classes after that if we have significant interest in this type of class.
Okay, so where do they go to sign up? Like, you say it's like on the internet, but like, where would that be?
They can, they can contact our Community Outreach, and the person in charge of there is Captain Blackwell. I don't have the number with me, but I can certainly get it to you, and we will certainly put that information out as well.
Yes, because I believe that there would be quite a bit of interest in a class like this, maybe more classes in the future. I know that I've asked for one, and that's why I was so surprised to see this, because, you know, I believe that people who own firearms ought to learn how to use them before they need to, and, you know, it might even help them to decide if they want to keep a firearm. You know, if it's scary enough to shoot it, you might not want it. So, anyway, Captain Blackwell.
Yes, ma'am.
First name?
Janice Blackwell.
Janice, okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
New badge looks good, Chief.
Okay. Chief, we got a couple more. Counsel Hilliard, and I guess we'll go this way. Counsel Williams and then Dr. O'Quinn.
Well, first of all, Chief, how you doing?
I'm doing good, sir.
Good, and thank you for providing this class for the public. I think it's something that's very well needed. Just a side note, I know your Public Relations Department is usually pretty good about informing us. Have them to email us, because I would have loved to have gotten some more of the women in my area in tune to this, and we would like to push it more often. So just give us some communication. We'd love to participate and work along with you. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Sir.
I just said the new badge looks good.
Yes, this is a, this is a duplicate, kind of a prototype, so we should have new badges coming out in about eight weeks.
Look sharp.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Doc.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for providing this class. I know, I reached out to you previously. I think this is a good way of... I think this is a good way of promoting community engagement with the community, so thank you for moving forward with this. Okay, all right, we're ready.
All right. Counselor Member Hilliard, Hoyt, O'Quinn.
Okay.
Counselor Member Hilliard.
Mr. Hilliard.
Yes, sir.
You're voting?
Yes, sir.
That vote should be up.
All right, thank you.
Like sixty-one up here. A resolution approving payment to Tractor and Equipment Company, Birmingham, for the purchase of Komoto D fifteen AX eight landfill dozier at seven hundred and twelve thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars, and Komoto PC thirty-six zero LC eleven excavator at three hundred and thirty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars, with optional features. The unit price is on file in the office of the purchasing agents, in accordance with source will contract number zero-three-two-one-nineteen dash K OM for the Public Works Department. Motion, please.
Move the item. Second.
Who moved it? I'm sorry, I missed that. O'Quinn, yeah. And I heard several seconds. Counselor Member Alexander, does that be fair?
No.
No, okay. Counselor Member Smithman?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that motion is, item is before you, sir.
I just got a quick comment.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
All right, so, yeah, I just wanted this one to be read, because landfills are not free. Million dollars of equipment just for moving around dirt and trash at the landfill, not to mention all the other expenses, so just something to think about. Thank you. All right, any other? Okay, we're ready to vote, Mr. Clark.
All right, voting should be up. Thanks, sir. That vote should be up.
Okay, all right, that item passes. Next item, Mr. Clark.
Sixty-five on page thirty-two. A resolution setting a public hearing August the tenth, two thousand and twenty-one, to consider the adoption of an ordinance to amend the zoning district map of the City of Birmingham. Case number ZAC two thousand and twenty-two, to change zone district boundaries from B-five, mixed business district QC two, qualified general commercial district, on order for the property to be redeveloped into an automobile dealership and service center filed by Ray Jones, representing the owner Atlas NC one SPE LLC for property located at four-eighty-eight Palisades Boulevard, and situated northeast quarter of six and fourteen Township, eighteen South Range, three west Birmingham. Motion, please.
I move approval. Second.
All right, item is before you.
Okay, we're just voting on the public hearing. Okay, all right, we're ready to vote, Mr. Clark.
Counselor Member Williams. All right, voting should be open about now. Counselor Member Hoyt. Counsel President Parker.
Yes, okay, all right, that item passes. Public hearing is set.
Item sixty-nine.
Yes, sir.
A resolution declaring the City of Birmingham heroism and valor ceremony on Thursday, August the twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one, at the Birmingham Museum of Art. At two o'clock PM serves a public purpose and promotes goodwill and the expenditure of public funds to be used for this purpose in accordance with Birmingham Code three dash one dash seven in amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars.
Move the items. Second.
Okay, items before us.
Who's second?
Cal.
No.
Counselor Smithman. Okay, all right, the items before us. Any questions, anything? Okay, we're ready to vote.
Voting should be open. Counselor Member O'Quinn. That vote should be up.
Okay, all right, that item passes. Next item, Mr. Clark.
Item seventy. A resolution appointing two members to the zoning board of adjustments. One, non-affiliated member, said term is by November the twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, and one, registered architect, said term is by November the twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five.
All right.
Second.
Names, who's associated with what term?
Jared Fulton, replacing Gary Nash, and Madeline Bowie, replacing Morris Newman. Mr. Fulton, his resume is blurred. He's a graduate of Auburn University and also Harvard University, and he is in the Woodlawn area, so that's where Mr. Fulton resides.
All right, so that motion by...
And we have received these resumes by some means?
Yes.
Oh, they're here. And I can say you couldn't read this one here. It came in blurred, but, because of the top here, but like I said, he's a graduate of Auburn University and Harvard University, Mr. Fulton is, and he is in the Woodlawn community. He graduated, plus I'm saying you can't read it, but I was...
Like a newspaper article, that's his resume?
No, that's just when you read it, you'll see, when you see it printed out, I just wanted to let you know, he's a graduate of Auburn and of Harvard University.
What kind of Harvard degree?
I can vouch for Jared.
Yeah, I'm just saying that he's, also saying he's, he's an...
He's legit.
Well, there's some people in this building that claim Harvard degrees and...
Okay, all right, we're ready to vote, Mr. Clark.
They have degrees, they have rings, they have Harvard rings. You know, you...
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I have my name down. Sir.
Yes, okay. Yes, sir.
Listen, I want to commend you for having the, the port of two to change these members, because they have been there, and they have almost become, I guess, isolated in their leadership, but they cease to be effective, and they need to go. I always want to say that. They need to go. It's not healthy for this city, and, you know, you're stuck in nineteen seventy, and we in nineteen twenty-one, I mean, twenty-twenty-one. So I want to commend you, sir, and I vote happily today in the affirmative.
All right, Mr. Clark?
Motion again, I missed the name, who did?
I was motion to approve those names.
No, I'm saying who made the motion.
I made the motion, I think.
Okay.
No, I made the motion.
Okay, Counsel Hoyt made the motion, and Counsel Hilliard's second.
Okay, all right, we'll take that.
Okay.
All right, voting should be open for the two appointments. Counselor Member Hoyt.
Yes.
All right, that's done.
All right, those members are appointed. All right, next item, Mr. Clark, thank you.
All right, we're done with the agenda items, so...
We will now, Counsel Woods, get all of the new business, we'll have the speakers. Okay, uh...
We're gonna do the agenda?
I thought we did the agenda.
We did.
Oh, we did.
Two of them were on consent, and the other two I just read.
You got another one? No?
Never mind.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
All right, we're in all the new business now, so Counsel Woods, Counsel Hilliard, you want to start, and you all then? On announcements.
Come back.
Okay, come back. All right, Counsel Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President. For a public safety committee, we are announcing a vacancy on the Jefferson County Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Authority, as well as the Special Care Facilities Authority. All interested applicants should submit their resumes to attention India Bailey, District Two, Birmingham City Council, Seventeen North Twentieth Street, Birmingham, Alabama, three five two zero three, or you can email india.bailey@birminghamal.gov. All resumes for both boards should be received by five PM on Thursday, July the twenty-ninth. Roebuck Springs will be having their regularly scheduled and now in-person neighborhood meeting at seven o'clock this Thursday, the fifteenth, and it's been good to see everybody in person again. It's been a long time since we've all been in the same room, and...
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
Counsel Hilliard, you want to come back?
Yeah.
Okay, all righty, Dr. O'Quinn. Thank you, President Parker. Just want to say thank you to all of the folks that came out and volunteered for the cleanup in Druid Hills this past weekend. We had around seventy folks and spread out all over the neighborhood and got a lot of stuff picked up in just a couple of hours, and thank you to DPW for supplying a roll-off dumpster so that we could get those trash bags all collected and moved out of the neighborhood. We have another cleanup coming, this coming weekend, for the Smithfield neighborhood. Definitely encourage folks to come out and participate in that. We will be determining the meeting location, but all you have to do to come help out is just show up. We supply all the materials, safety vests, gloves, trash bags, grabbers, and again, thank you for, to DPW for helping out. And I want to say thanks again to DPW for helping at the Powell School. We had some donors who hired a crew to go out there and cut some of the weeds back there. It's an ongoing project, but we're working to secure that property and get it cleaned up, so thanks again to DPW for providing the roll-off dumpster to collect all that material and get it out of there. I really appreciate your cooperation. Thank you. All right, thank you. Counselor Abbott?
Thank you, Mr. President. The next budget and finance meeting will be held on July twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-one, at three-thirty PM. Submissions are due on July twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, by two PM. There are no exceptions, and we are very hopeful that everyone will turn in complete applications so that budget and finance can move smoothly. I wanted to, so excited to be able to say something about something besides just our normal business, because the neighborhood I live in is just absolutely turning into a gigantic dump site. I've never seen so much stuff dumped, and I wanted to ask the administration, when our people pick up large quantities of construction materials and carpet and all that kind of stuff, do we ever make note of the fact that there are no building permits anywhere nearby? You know, if somebody dumps a bunch of construction materials in their alley behind their home, they're probably doing a construction project. Does anyone ever put two and two together with this dumping of all this construction stuff that someone might need a building permit?
So, yes, ma'am, Ms. Abbott. So it's a few things. The coordinated code enforcement piece has, they've been really doing a deeper dive into what you've just noted, because the entities really have moved a little bit separately, and being able to, one, track, two, provide notice and follow-up to all of those businesses, companies, neighbors that are really egregious in their efforts, that's kind of the next phase. One is the camera system, obviously, to be able to track them, but two, notice to them that we are watching, and then we're gonna be doing a different level of enforcement. So the answer to your question is yes, but they are moving towards a different level of engagement, and with the Office of the City Attorney to do follow-up. So the answer is yes, but it does need a much more aggressive layer, and that's what we're working on now. So the answer to your question is yes. They are tracking.
Yeah, because, you know, unfortunately, our neighborhood is one that back in the sixties and seventies, the council thought we needed lots more apartments. So in between regular, normal houses, we have these apartments, and the apartment owners apparently think that dumping everything that they pull out of their apartments is for the city to pick up, and the city picks it up. We're very nice about picking up everything that everyone puts out, including, I'm told, we don't pick up construction materials, but that is a lie, because we pick up everything everybody throws out. We could probably put a dead body out there, and the city would pick it up.
Well, that's not...
So all the things that we say we don't pick up, we do pick up. Even if a property owner cuts down a tree the size of this table, we come by and pick it up without ever questioning, did that ninety-year-old property owner really cut that tree and put it out on the curb? Well, no, but we pick it all up. We just, there's no discrimination whatsoever. It's like we don't call into question that the property owner is doing something illegal. We just pick everything up, and as long as we encourage illegal activity, we're gonna get more of it.
So they do now. So there is a different kind of leaning when they see that behavior now. This is for each of you, so this is what we will ask of you. When you see those efforts, one, communicate those to us, and we're doing two different things now. One, there's a different level of follow-up from both our Community Development Department and our Customer Service Department to put them on notice, but there's also, again, a different coordination between our code enforcement teams from both PEP and Department of Public Works. So when you see it, let us know now, and the engagement is different. We're actually gonna be coming back to the council with some recommendations from both of those teams to put a little bit more meat and teeth into our enforcement ability, so share that with us, and we'll do follow-ups with you all on the engagement for those egregious businesses and residents. So please continue to let us know. You'll see a different level of engagement for those folks, so the answer is yes.
Okay, so when I catch people from Pelham dumping on a vacant lot in my neighborhood, I catch them physically, can I, who do I call? Do I call the police? Do I call, I mean, it's always on the weekends or in the evenings, you know, they don't do that, they know they're breaking the law. They know. The last guy I caught, I told him if he didn't put the stuff back on his truck, I was gonna have the police come and arrest him. I knew I didn't have that power, but he didn't know that, and he and his friend put all the junk that they had just finished dumping back on his truck, and probably drove down the street and dumped it in somebody else's neighborhood, but there needs to be someone for us to call when the act is happening that might be able to come and catch them, because, you know, we always say, well, if nobody saw it, it didn't happen.
So we don't want to tip our hand to the folks who are doing the egregious behavior because they'll just move somewhere else? This is what I would recommend, Counselor. One, notify our office, and we'll coordinate to make sure we help you catch them, because they're, we don't disclose where our cameras are, we don't disclose where we're setting up, to make sure we catch those folks, so don't tip your hand to them, let us know, and then we'll have the teams, including the Office of the City Attorney and BPD and code enforcement, work with you so that we can assist you, so you're not doing it by yourself. That's what I mean, there's a different level of engagement and watchful eye that's happening now, so...
Well, that's good news, because people are just getting so fed up. I'm getting fed up, and when I'm accosting men in trucks, you know I'm pretty fed up, because one woman with, I mean, it just...
Yes, please don't do that.
It just makes me crazy. They just come from other cities, and they just dump all over our neighborhoods, because they know that we'll pick it up, haul it off to our dump that we just spent a million dollars on today.
Mr. President?
You got your man.
Okay, is this in follow-up to Counsel Abbott, or you want to leave here now? We're working through...
Well, this, I mean, I'm speaking to the issue that she's brought before us. Counselor Abbott, I'm glad you're not in that class for the, learn how to shoot the gun.
I'm gonna try to get in it. I got a lot of guns, I have an arsenal. All right. No, please, Counselor Abbott, boy. Play on.
That's Mae West.
Flip it out, man.
Please don't really, man. I'm not caring. But I, but I think, yeah, but I think what she's suggesting really puts us in a quiet mind, because providing that you see somebody cutting down trees and, you know, and putting this debris out is one thing, but oftentimes, they've already left, and, you know, I've had somebody who had a big tree, and I couldn't figure out which side it was cutting on to the... cutting on to the other day. But the thing about it is, then this mess is sitting out in front of your home. It's not fair. And so, you know, we can't have it on both ends. I would rather the city pick it up if we can't catch them doing it, or go by there and 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 tax the person who who placed it out there. I I think that's, you know, but I don't want something to sit there until we work something out in court. And 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 you know, my property value is being depreciated every day that we don't pick it up. So I don't know. I I think what you all doing may not be the best effort, but certainly is doing something. And I've had that to happen. But I want to suggest, too, Mr. Chief, Chief, that that perhaps we need to go back to educating our our citizens. And a lot of them don't know, you know, people come by, they don't have license, they cut down these trees, they're trying to save money, but they're not really saving, because it really impacts others in the in the community. And so I would think education would be a way to 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 reach our our constituents, because a lot of them don't know, you know. And I know the rules, and then when I see it, I call it, you know. But but that don't mean that everybody knows. And so maybe we need to set out a booklet or so and just, you know, just talk about that. Talk about the other zoning issues and and compliances that that need to be employed by all citizens. And I think that way, we can at least say we we informed them, because it's not this happening more and more. Even with my neighbor, who I looked in the back today, this morning, and looked like she tearing out the ceiling or something, had, what is that stuff you put in the attic? That fabric insulation and all that. So but she putting it out there. And and, you know, and I kind of want y'all go by and pick it up. She goes, making my stuff look bad. I don't want to be sitting on my patio looking at that, you know. But but if y'all go and tell her that she needs to have the contractor, whoever's doing the work, to carry that off, that would be very fine. And you all have done that in some cases. So but it is a problem, and it's happening more and more. So but I think we need to educate the folk, too.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Counselor. And to all of the councils, Counselor Hoyt is spot on. That's a part of the new leaning as well, Counselor Abbott. It is a balance. We don't want our neighborhoods and our citizens' homes looking the way they look when people do it. So it is a delicate balance, but we don't. The plan is not to give people a pass. It is to educate. It is to remove. But it is also let them know that enforcement is on the way, and it will not be tolerated. So we'll make sure you all receive that that follow up, and we work in coordination when it happens in your respective districts.
Counselor Abbott said, depending on your announcements, or you have.
Yes, that's all for my announcements. I'm waiting with bated breath to see what we're doing, because it's fine for the city to pick all this stuff up, but that's taxpayer money being wasted, paying for somebody else's mess. You know, if these contractors don't haul away their own stuff, then our our people end up paying for it. That's wrong. And we're spending millions of dollars picking up other people's trash. Not Birmingham residents, but people who are in here making money and probably doing it without a building permit. That would be my guess. So, thank you.
Yes. Counselor Smith.
Thank you, President Parker. Counsel Abbott, please don't confront people. I would hate for something to happen to you, because my father and I did do that last year, and somebody threw glass at the car. So I I just wouldn't advise that. People are people, you don't know how people react. And Wardine and I were talking about that with our neighborhood yesterday. I have been talking with Mr. Mitchell about having a workshop on updating the code enforcement. I want you all to know that. I heard the sentiments of Counselor O'Quinn, when he was trying to translate to Spanish, because I have a lot of Spanish-speaking constituents. So we're hoping to do that in the next couple of weeks. And I agree with Counsel Hoyt. We do need to educate people more. I know we're on this whole non-paper thing for notice, but I know a lot of us have a lot of older constituents that like to receive things in the mail. So I don't know if it's some temporary thing, we can give our people notice or something that we can do. I know it would cost more money, but maybe you you all could do like a survey to see, hey, maybe some neighborhoods prefer maybe a paper notice for three months. Or if you have maybe a younger neighborhood, maybe they can go towards technology, because a lot of times, a lot of people don't know that the bulk and trash schedule is on the website, even though we say it a lot. So I do want to talk about Shadowline Cemetery, because we haven't been able to talk publicly. My office has gotten a lot of calls about Shadowline Cemetery. I do want the public to know we have been working very hard with the City Attorney's Office, the Mayor's Office, and Mason City Neighborhood to get that done. We've gone a lot of obstacles, but I think we have found a good solution for it. Mason City received $10,000 last year to cut Shadowline. And so we have a particular avenue, hopefully through Public Works. So we're looking to have that cemetery cut within the next couple of weeks. So I just want to publicly say that. Also, Arlington West Stand, you are up this week for taking pride where I reside, which means you guys should be seeing Public Works cutting your grass. Make sure to thank Public Works. I also want to tell Chief Sparks and Mr. Mitchell, Public Works is doing a great job. Someone actually put out some some items, some huge items, right next door to our house. And Public Works, they did such a great job. They were very effective and speedy, and they were able to get all of it. It was probably as long as probably the the dais or it was it was a lot of material. So I just want to tell you that they're doing a great job. Let's see, South Tissois will have their neighborhood meeting. It will be a conference call at 5:30. Call 602-580-9484. Again, that's 602-580-9484. The code is 684-6616. Also, Arlington West Stand will have their meeting tonight at 6:00 PM. It's a conference call. Call 425-436-6359. The code is 6438112. Also, next Saturday, July 24, from noon to 2:00, Moreland Conquerors will have the Annual Respect Drive Thru Rally, and it will be on the campus of the church. Lastly, I am making another announcement for the Director Two opening on the Land Bank Authority of the City of Birmingham. Resumes are due by August 15, 2021. Please forward your resume to my email address. That's crystal, C-R-Y-S-T-A-L. Smitherman@BirminghamAL.gov. And we also have openings on the Stormwater Appeals Board and Solid Waste Authority Board. Thank you, President Parker.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Counselor Smith. Counselor Hoyt?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Beverly Heights, David's. Victor meets tonight, and that's at 6:30 at Brown Elementary. And the Enslie Neighborhood Association meets at 6 o'clock, and that's July the 15th on Thursday at its regular meeting place. Could we, I guess, get an update, Mr. Mr. President, on the the COVID and the death and and plans to increase the vaccination? I know you've been doing a lot of, um, uh, street talk. So I want to know what the streets are saying. So.
Well, let me.
Can you can you have us a little update, a public update, maybe next week or so?
Yes, sir. I will. Just short version. Last night, we had our regular bi-weekly conversation with Dr. Hicks from the Health Department and Dr. Martha Dawson, who's president of the National Nurses, Black Nurses Association, Dr. Clayton from ARMS, Chris Mosley. So the indication is is that the Delta variant is coming back, and it's going to be deadly. And so everyone is just stressing the importance of being vaccinated as quickly as we possibly can. ARMS, as you know, has been teaming up with the school system, trying to vaccinate the students from 12 and older. And so we will definitely, we'll definitely make sure we invite Health Department or other medical experts to come in and give us an overview. Counselor Hoyt, and I think it's just going to be incumbent upon us, and we'll be rolling something out to everyone, that we continue to message the importance of just please, please get vaccinated as quickly as we possibly can. And so I think there's a, you know, we talked about it last night, but also just in our efforts as as a city to make sure we just stress the importance of it. And this Delta variant is no joke. And as you've seen across the country, you know, it's it's moving at a rapid pace. And so we'll definitely make sure we have that update, Counselor Hoyt, by next week from some.
Got any strategies as to how we could could increase that, you know, from the health professionals? And I know that UAB has called, reached out to our office to see if we would do robo calls to increase the efforts of those, you know, getting vaccinated. So.
Yes, sir. And there are some things that we'll be doing as council members to definitely throw the kitchen sink at it. I know a lot of people thought it was gone, and we had defeated it, but it's it's back with vengeance. So, yes, sir, we will definitely work on that immediately. So.
Thank you. That's my announcement, sir.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Counselor Woods.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Kilo Springs Neighborhood Association will meet tonight at 6:30 PM at Smith Middle School. Also, want to encourage all our high school athletes to register for the Magic City Showcase, Rivals, 247 Sports. All recruiting agencies will be here to run athletes through the combine, as well as build online profiles for recruiting. So definitely want to encourage everyone to take advantage of that. District One Budget Review Annual Meeting will be July 20 at 6:30. If you're interested in participating in that, email me at clinton.woods@BirminghamAL.gov. And I also want to congratulate Pastor Mike Jr. for another huge weekend, bringing home three more stellar awards. And also want to shout out members of Rock City, local Birmingham residents, that took Birmingham up to Nashville and really represented Birmingham well. So I want to congratulate him once again. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Counselor Hilliard?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to congratulate Rock City. And the pastor there, I saw him earlier before he went, and I'm excited to know that we have a hometown hero. So congratulations to the Woods family and his family for that. On on coming up on July the 14th, we will be celebrating with the Greater Birmingham Church in 1501 First Avenue in Enslie. They will be having their annual cleanup day, and we are excited about that. They will also be having striping, where they will be cleaning up and striping their parking day. Volunteers are needed. Also, tonight, the Tuxedo Heights Neighborhood Organization will be hosting their in-person neighborhood meeting at 4:45 PM at the North Pratt Library. Tonight, also, we will have the North Pratt Neighborhood Association meeting. We'll still be meeting virtually. You can reach them at 7:20, 7:40, 9732 is the code, is the access code. You can call my office for more information. Also, the virtual town hall meeting from my office will be tonight at 7:30 PM. We'll be having a Mr. Stefan Michael from Washington DC, who from Torchmark Bank, to educate our listeners on the Reinvestment Act. So we're excited about that. You can tune in at 508-924-1349. Also, I'd like to say, you know, it's been interesting over the last year that we've been doing this virtual town hall meeting since the pandemic. It's it's been better than meeting in person, to be honest with you. I've had more people call in to have virtual town hall meeting than all the neighborhood meetings put together. We've literally had over 6,000 people tune in. I I'm going to keep my virtual town hall meetings going, because when you're trying to move from one side of town to the other, to a neighborhood meeting, it's still good to do that in-person meeting. But I can honestly tell you that more people attend my virtual town hall meeting than come to the actual neighborhood meeting itself. So that's that's been good for our seniors and others who can't get out their house, who want to save money on gas and transportation. And maybe that's something that may spread out throughout our districts. It's District Nine time. I'm Councilman John Hilliard. Thank you for that.
Well, I always worry when I follow Mr. Hilliard, but thank you very much. I do just want to announce two neighborhood meetings that are taking place today in District Seven. There's the Riley Travalic Neighborhood Meeting. It's tonight at 6:00 PM. There will be a by conference call. The number is 978-990-5363, and the access code is 734-5914. The Germania Park Neighborhood Meeting will also be held this evening at 6 by conference call. That number is 701-802-5384, and the access code is 304-2330. As was mentioned earlier, Lawson State Community College is offering free COVID vaccinations. That's today and tomorrow from 11 to 3:00 PM, and that's at the Academic Success Center. So as been mentioned already, COVID has not gone away. We're still struggling with it. We have the variant that's very deadly. I read this morning, I believe the state of Alabama is the lowest in the number of individuals who have taken advantage of the COVID-19 vaccination. So we need to still be mindful and stay safe. But in these areas where we're providing those vaccinations, this is right here in District Seven at Lawson State Community College, so please take advantage of it. I do want to congratulate the Winona Pirates. This is a youth baseball team that won second place yesterday, 27 to 25. So we want to congratulate all of the team members, the parents, and the coaches for the great job. And I'd like to particularly thank Coaches Vernon Brown and Coaches Mentor Toby and Ally for the patience that they took to work with our young boys. And so kudos to them. And we have something coming your way as a way of celebrating that victory. Also, I would like to mention, we talk about what we can do in the community, ourselves, individuals, to help each other. And I want to commend Mr. Ronnie Brown. He's a local truck driver. He surprised the members of the Winona High School Drum Line and donated a number of drums to the Winona High School Marching Band. So we want to thank him for his effort and his volunteerism and his monies he put forward on his own to help those students. And so we'll be looking for a lot of sounds and a lot of sonic boom coming out of the Winona Dragons, thanks to that donation. Also, in the part of taking pride where I reside, they're also coming to you this week in Oakwood Place. So please be mindful that the Department of Public Works will be there cleaning up in your neighborhood, going through and making a sweep. So we want to look forward to that. I in piggybacking on Counselor Abbott's question about recycling, we know that recycling did start back up two times a month, this month in July. We had one pickup on July 7. We'll have another on July 21. I want to thank Chief Sparks and the Department of Public Works. Had a little hiccup on Wednesday, the first day of recycling. They didn't pick up everything in my street. I don't know if you see the commercial where you have the glasses on, you're not sure if you're looking at a cat or an animal. But I looked down the street, saw all these white bags out there, and that was where our recycling wasn't picked up. But I thank you all for coming back, Chief Sparks and Public Works, for picking that recycling up. So we'll be ready again on July 21. Just want to remind you, when we talk about cleanliness in our neighborhood, it's an effort that we all work together. And so we'll be talking about it a little bit more. But we will have our Second Annual Love D7 Love Your Environment Day. It's tentatively scheduled for July 24. I'll give you more information about where we'll be having this. But this is an opportunity. We'll have large trucks where you can bring out recyclables. And we can also have some, we'll have cleanups planned for that day. And so just stay tuned for Love D7 Day. And that's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you. Just want to wish everyone, we're back here in the chamber. So everyone, please stay safe. Expect us in communications on the on our COVID-19 and some other additional updates. Go ahead. No, I'm good. I'm good. We're good. We're good on that. I also just really want to thank the Housing Authority this weekend. Counsel, I mean, Clinton, Counselor Woods, you know, we have some young stars that are starting now that's going to be, you know, going and going on to college. And so they were great athletes this weekend. I want to thank the Housing Authority for. great athletes this weekend. I want to thank the Housing Authority for partnering with the NFL, the NFL flag. And that's going to be, you'll hear, you'll be hearing more about it over the next couple of days. Some great and exciting announcements as we move forward in youth sports. So with that, any other, is there a motion, Counsel Williams?
Yeah. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known, Mr. Senator.
Okay. Thank you. All be safe.
All right.
Grammy's in they family.